It'll depend on how everybody votes. So, I feel like once, so normally, once I get all the votes, I'm gonna read how many votes each person got that interviewed. So, I'll read up all of that once, and then you guys will know who the top three are. Because just based on what you give me does not mean that has to be the motion. Because you can make a motion to take someone who isn't even on the top three. It's completely up to you at any point to motion whoever you want.
Yeah, so my concern is, is that there could be a clear top two. Let's just say, or a top one, and then the two or three could be a toss-up.
Correct. That's possible, that's definitely possible.
I just want, I don't know the answer here, and I just want to be clear that we're not discussing this.
After we know the numbers.
After we know the names, yeah. And so, my original thought was if there's a clear top two, we take the top two. The third one would be the partial term.
And I thought about it, and thought the top two get the two-year, or the four-year terms, and the third person.
That's exactly what I was thinking, yeah.
So, the mayor's approach is interesting. It does allow a little flexibility. My assumption is, everybody who's applying would want the four-year slot, so that it's a formality that will get us to the same conclusion, but, you know, either way would work.
And my only thought process about giving the top two the opportunity to make that choice is because I believe they are employed. And sometimes unemployment may dictate how much time that they would want to commit to this. So, I mean, giving them that.
May I suggest this? We take the top two as four-year terms, and the third one would be the partial term. However, we will give the top two an opportunity to take the partial term, if they opt for that.
One or the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same difference.
It's kind of a compromise of where we are, right? But, because then it just.
We could also add a question to tonight. Are you here to do a four-year term or a two-year term right off the bat?
Yeah, my only, my only, my only fear of that is, is like, well, you're guessing if I'm fully committed or not, right? Yeah, and I wouldn't want to put that on them.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I'm inclined to think the top two will get the four-year slots. But, the idea of giving those two candidates the option to say, "I like the competition and interview process, I want to go back in two years," I find that odd, but it could happen. So, you know, I think the default will be the top two get four, and the third gets the partial, but, you know, we can offer them flexibility. You know, if we like them all, it's a matter of, you know, getting the ones we want. How long is not as critical to me.
Do I need to make a motion on that? Or do we just, can we verbally agree?
You guys are just deciding how you're gonna make the decision.
I think the city clerk is right. At the end of the day, we could say, you know, all that withstanding, I want these three on the bottom to get in, and.
I was just notified that candidate number four, Arvind Nishel, has dropped out of this interview process. She is. And we were able to reach out to number seven, Shirley Koot, and she will come at seven o'clock. So, we're gonna be able to fill his spot.
So, right now, we're still waiting.
So, Arvind dropped out?
Arvind dropped out, correct.
And we're still waiting on the motion to close open.
Yeah, we weren't taking a motion, we're just gentleman, gentleman, gentlelady agreeing to it.
Are we ready?
For public, for public comment to close.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't have to have the motion, you just closed it. You closed it when there were no.
There were no, you closed it earlier.
Perfect.
So, just so you guys know, Nicole is gonna be bringing the applicants from Oath Hill over here. She's gonna stay here during their interview, she's gonna take them back and pick up the next one.
The runner.
The runner, Nicole is the runner. She is the, yeah, okay, I think, are we ready for number one?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Thanks for bringing that up. Good evening and welcome, Marilyn.
Nicole, would you mind showing her how to adjust the, okay, thank you.
And while she's doing that, just to let you know the process for tonight. She can't listen to me and her at the same time.
Let's turn it on first, that helps.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Marilyn. Just so you, to let you know what tonight's process is gonna look like, you'll have twenty minutes total time, and the council will give a series of questions to you. Each one of us have two questions that we'll ask you in regards to your qualifications. We'll go through them in order. We actually thank you for, and appreciate just your interest in being part of this process, you know, for the community. And with that, tonight, we'll start off with council member David Oral. David, you have the floor.
Thank you, Marilyn, thank you for being here tonight. The first question is, just tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the commission.
Thank you so much. My name is Marilyn Avalon, and I'm a ten-year resident of American Canyon, and I'm a public educator. I've been in education for over thirty-five years. Majority of my career has been a teacher, teacher leader, instructional coach. I was a former principal with the Vallejo City Unified School District, and most recently, I was principal at Donaldson Way in American Canyon. School of over five hundred and sixty-seven students, more than forty teachers, it's TK through fifth grade. Had a very fabulous run, and just recently retired as of June twenty-six. And I feel I had so much fun, so much joy, being a principal, in our lovely city of American Canyon. I feel there's so much more for me to do and give and advocate. I'm a real proud residence of this city. I like the direction that we're going. Thank you also, wanted to tell all of you, thank you for giving me this opportunity to even be selected to be interviewed today. I feel grateful. This community is so incredibly diverse, and it's young, and there are so many wonderful things happening. Our ability to care about our wetlands, the Future Ecology Center, the housing that's coming up, even affordable housing that we're considering for people that are commuting back and forth between, you know, Vallejo or Benicia, or even into Napa, that there is housing available for them. It is such a marvelous city to live in, work in, play, I know that's part of our motto, and I was one of those lucky residents that actually got to work, live, and play here.
Thank you.
Melissa, you'll be next.
Good evening, Marilyn, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, thank you.
My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon?
Wow, that's a really big question. My vision for American Canyon, like I said again, it's a, it's a young city, but the vision is close to what council believes. You know, our mission and vision of progressive, being progressive with our, the housing, the business opportunities, bringing in new businesses and jobs to our city, as well as having that continued partnership with our five schools. We've got, I know I'm a little biased here, but we've got five incredible schools, continuing our partnership with the Napa Valley Unified School District, Napa Valley County of Education, as well as the Chamber. So, my vision really is about how do we get people to not just drive through American Canyon, but making a stopping place. This is a great place to raise your family, have your grandchildren here, maybe your children even buy homes here, and they continue to go to our school and foster that growth. And this is a community that is about volunteerism and giving back. So, I see, my vision for American Canyon is housing, appropriate housing, housing that's available for the people that work here, live here, and can afford to live here. Also, the type of businesses that were coming in, job opportunities, and thinking more future. For example, opportunities for greater health care, also to preserving what we take great pride in, which is our environment, conservation, our wetlands. I'm really proud of our work with the American Canyon Parks and Recs and what we're bringing here. The learning opportunities for our kids. So, another touchstone I wanted to talk about was also transportation and safety. Those essentials that we need in our, in our city. Being a former principal in this town, I know the relationship that we have with our local law enforcement and first responders and fire departments, and how they play such a critical role in what they do for our city. So, safety, transportation, housing, and keeping up the good work that we do with our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, thank you for being here, and my question is simply, what would you like to accomplish while you're on the planning commission?
I would like to accomplish, on the planning commission, being part of a team that works alongside you and members of our community, to place American Canyon, I know it's on the map, but not a place that people just drive through, but they stop. And this is a place that they want to dine, this is a place they come to visit, this is a place that they come to stay overnight. I know that we have lots of future plans for our ruins, the luxury hotel that's gonna be made. This is a place where people can stop and enjoy, perhaps go to a day spa. And, and, I don't know if I answered the question properly, but my, my vision for this city is something that we are all proud of. This is a place that you want your children to go to school here, you want to buy a home here, and when you go out and say, "I live in American Canyon," that means something. A place where people have a spot to work, whether that's in healthcare, law enforcement, education. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Hi, Marilyn.
Hi.
Thanks for coming and interviewing with us. So, my question is, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Thank you. I do not know the other candidates, but I can tell you, that as a former principal of our school district and of Donaldson Way, I have a relationship with many of the families, many of the residents here, and I've had conversations with them about, you know, the progression that we see, where our students are going, whether it's elementary school, middle school, whether they're going to that college and career route. I've talked to many of our residents, what they feel about traffic, safety issues, particularly safety around our school, the response time of our first responders, our relationship that we have with law enforcement. I also feel that I recognize and appreciate the diversity of this city. It's a young city, but we're all so proud to live here. We have a great tradition. You know, American Canyon, it's not just a saying, but it's true. When we say, when we have that symbol that says, you know, "We heart everyone in American Canyon," we do, we welcome you, we love you, we want you to be part of this town. You know, when I came to this city ten years ago, my son said this story to me, it's a little funny. He said, "Mom, we lived in Hidden Brook for seven years. We moved into our street, Stone Creek Drive, we were only here for seven minutes, and people came to say, 'Hello, how are you? Can I help you? Can we move your furniture?'" It is such a welcoming city to be a part of, and I feel that I can help spirit that, I feel I can help challenge that. I feel that I have the capacity, if somebody did not agree, or why are we doing this? Why is our city council creating this? Why are we making this? I feel like that I could be a good listener, an advocate, and also somebody that perhaps explains the direction that our city is going. Explain what that mission and vision is.
Thank you, Marilyn, thank you.
Hi, Marilyn, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My question for you tonight, the first one, describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or policy.
So, I'm gonna piggyback to that last statement earlier. I think part of my background, being an elementary principal, you know, you deal with many, many people. People who are happy, people who are sad, people who just don't understand. But, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that we listen, that we listen to understand, and that's where good communication comes from. We are gonna, you know, face people who are, unfortunately, maybe they don't have the ability to communicate what they're feeling, and maybe that comes from a place of fear. But, when we listen more and we understand, and we understand that person's position, or that group of people's position, and I get an opportunity to explain, perhaps we can meet in the middle. So, I believe in win-win.
Thank you, thank you. Next, councilmember Oral?
Yeah, thank you. So, can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning, and tell us why? Alternatively, tell us about a city that has poor planning and why? You don't have to answer both, you could, but pick one or the other.
You had asked me a tough question, councilmember Oral. Well, you know, I'm gonna be bold to say that a city that I feel that has good planning is our city. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, sir, this is the first time I've ever felt that I want to be involved in the city, the city that I live in, that I'm proud to live in. I've lived in another city for the majority of my life, but I moved here ten years ago and have felt nothing but welcome from my neighbors, my community, the people that I work with. I'm so proud of our planning, of our parks and recreation that we have, and we keep in mind the people that live here. You know, our elderly, our young parents and families that live here. American Canyon recently was named by Forbes Magazine as one of the top ten places to retire. As a retiree, I believe that. I feel comfortable walking here, talking to my neighbors, there's lots of fun places to eat, that's happening right now, lots of opportunities for us to go. The parks, for example, you can, you can take a walk, there's the park over by Napa Junction Elementary School, if you feel like exercising, you can exercise out there, there's the beautiful wetlands. And just the mere fact that we have a planning commission that is open to new ideas, new things that are being built, potential of new jobs and opportunities, and our council works hand-in-hand with our city planning, as well as our parks and recs and our essential providers. I'm gonna be bold to say, we got a pretty cool town. It's a, she's a young city, but up and coming, and the people that live here are proud, proud of our diversity, our traditions, and our future that we can bring.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests among stakeholders, such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did you approach the situation, and what was the outcome?
Councilmember, could you repeat the question one more time? I'm sorry, thank you.
Absolutely. Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests among stakeholders, such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How would you approach the situation, and what, what was the outcome, if you've had any experience in this area?
Okay, I'm gonna share an experience recently that I had a couple of years ago, and I'm gonna talk to you from the perspective of being a former principal. And most recently, as you know, our, our city passed the A-two bond, which goes to benefit the schools in American Canyon, and, and that was a tough one, you know, that was a tough one. And so, with that, we had to let our community members know that by passing that bond, the funds that we receive from the bonds go directly to our five schools. And importantly, we had to talk about how, how one of our schools, Donaldson Way in particular, was one of the oldest. It's more than fifty years old, and it did not have a working PA system, it did not have the playground, the playground asphalt is very old, and we had children, as well as staff, hurt themselves and break their legs. And within the Donaldson Way property also is a creek that runs through it, in a beautiful garden that we erected. So, it was really important for me to listen to the concerns of the voters, and also listen to the concerns of the families, the young parents that have their children at my school, but not just my school, but the other schools would benefit as well. So, that, that's one example, and the way I de-escalated that was simply just being available, being available to listen, respond, pick up the phone, respond to an email. I would host monthly coffee mornings, so parents could understand, that they could meet with me, and this is why I feel that this is the direction that we need to go, and also ensuring that there were things, we would preserve, we would preserve that creek. We would preserve our opportunity to visit the creek, visit our Donaldson Way garden, that was not going to be destroyed, and also assure them that the benefits that the school is going to receive is not just for the children that are there today, but the children that are there for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Marilyn, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the planning commission and the city council? What kinds of things would you advocate as an individual commissioner, or advocate as part of the commission?
Thank you. First of all, is relationship building. It's really important that members of the planning commission know the mission and vision and the direction of our city council. What, what is the plan? What is the plan, and what, what do we want to preserve, and what is our future planning? It's, it's really important that both entities have conversations with one another, whether those are meetings that we, we are able to have together with a running agenda, and these are topics or things that are coming down the pike that we want to talk about. And it's also important that we hear differing points of view. You know, you're gonna get, you know, maybe ten, twelve people in the room, and we're all not necessarily going to agree, or if somebody thinks that's a terrible idea, perhaps we need to listen to others to see why that is a good idea that needs to go forward. So, I believe communication, honesty, transparency, knowledge, and having the background information, and, and really coming in with an open heart, that you're there to learn. You know, I can't come in with a fixed mindset, I have to come in with an open mindset.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
Thank you.
Okay, Marilyn, so what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be, and why?
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna say your essential services. Again, I mentioned it earlier, it's, it's really important that the community, the citizens of American Canyon feel that they're safe, that we have law enforcement and first responders and fire department, should an emergency happen, we know how to handle that. And also, that goes forth to our schools. Are we communicating the training and expectations that we have with our leaders at our schools? And, and as far as the, continue with the economic development, it's what businesses are we attracting or bringing to American Canyon, so that there can be more jobs here? For example, we have very few healthcare, like, facilities. We have an MRI unit, I believe, or like, no, an urgent care clinic, we have an urgent care clinic, but with a community as large and as diverse as American Canyon, and I do know many of my own friends and parents that went to my school, or people that reside in this community, they're in healthcare, and they're commuting to either Vallejo to go to work, or Napa to go to work. But, it would be really amazing if we could have our own healthcare clinic facility here, to support our residents that live here, so they don't have to leave town if they're sick. if they're sick. There, there's someplace to go to. And I would say also to, you know, continue the preservation of what makes American Canyon so special. We're surrounded by these beautiful wetlands and, you know, the, the birds and the flora and the fauna that are here. And I know, I get, I go back to my educational background, but my students at Donalds Way, they're very much a part of the trees that were planted here, making sure that cleanup took place during the wetlands. We visit the wetlands, it's part of our fourth grade studies. We build bluebird boxes in the fifth grade. So keeping up, making sure our community is safe always, bringing in opportunities for jobs, thinking about healthcare, and at the same time fostering a relationship with the learning opportunities that take place because they're naturally here.
Thank you. All right, my, and the last final question for tonight. How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with projects like the Broadway District's Pacific Plan, Green Island, and the Watson Ranch and Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
Can I tell you, I'm really excited about all of that. I'm really, really excited about all of that. Particularly the Napa Valley ruins because I know it's a, it's a historic place, but it's going to be transformed into something incredible. From my basic knowledge of that, I do know that there are plans of an amphitheater. So I see that as an opportunity to bring in entertainment. People, and, and that brings in revenue for our city. There's also the new luxury hotel, and I believe condominiums are going, are going to be built. And then I think of, you know, spa opportunities, people, for, for people to visit. And the new housing opportunities that are coming, more and more new families coming, young families coming to our city. And overall, I'm excited about future jobs that can be created. I do know just a little bit about the Giovanni project. I know that's not the same area. But how that potential warehouse can also be business offices for those companies that might wanna consider coming to American Canyon.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our questions for tonight. We appreciate you taking interest in serving in our community. We all do. So we still have some more candidates that we're gonna interview. And then I think we're gonna keep you posted in the room that you were in first as we go through it, and then we'll call you back in here when we have the selections made.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. It was an honor to meet all of you and have this chance to speak to all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I, I don't know if you noticed, but I did set the timer for twenty minutes. I just turned it off really quick when it beeped. But that helps them because they can see that timer on the podium. So that'll help them, like, kinda see, formulate their answers.
Just over twenty, right?
We were, yeah, just a little bit over.
And it's helpful that we have one less person.
Yeah, it'll help.
Okay.
Hi Beth. Hi Beth. Over here. Over here, hi.
Little short guy right there. Should we tell them that they only have a total of twenty minutes?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay, then. All right.
We brought a, we brought an extra bag. I understand.
Good evening, Mr. Charlie Plummer.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. How are you this evening?
We're well, we're well.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well. Just to let you know the process for tonight. You have twenty minutes total time. And the Council will have a series of questions to ask you. We will go through them in order. Each of us have two questions apiece for a total of ten questions. We all thank you and appreciate your interest in participating in this interview process. And with that said, I'd like to hand it off to Councilmember David Oral for the first question.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Plummer. Good to see you again, Charlie.
Evening, Mr. Oral, Councilman.
Tell us about yourself and why you wanna be on Planning Commission.
Well, let's see. I've, you know, I've, I've been very fortunate in my professional career to have done, you know, amazing things in the wine industry. I work as a, as an executive in the wine industry. And one of, a lot of the things that I've done over the last ten years or so has been about vineyard development or capital development, property development, et cetera, et cetera. In addition to that, you know, dealing a lot with compliance permitting for wineries, et cetera, et cetera, has been a lot of the work that I've done. For me, you know, I've, I've been a resident now of American Canyon since 2015. So I'm coming up on my tenth year, generally excited to see. And there's many things about this city that, that kept me here rather than living in Napa. And part of it's been about the community involvement and how, how our leadership really opens up to input and involvement, encourage that involvement from its community and citizens. So to answer your question, Councilman Oral, you know, I'm, I, I feel a very strong sense of pride for how this city's going and the direction it's going in. I feel I have some experiences and perspective and background that I can lend to this commission in particular that can be helpful for aligning with the growth in the city and the, and the general plan of the city as well, too. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My question to you is, what is your vision for American Canyon?
Well, thank you, Councilwoman. You know, I, I think this city is, it's, it's, I don't wanna use the word unique, but it's distinct. And I like the word distinct because, you know, when you look at the county as a whole, we always talk about a valley or down valley, but American Canyon is its own entity. The growth of this city is inevitable. It's going to happen. People want to live here because of the community that, that this city and all the people before us have built. And so, you know, my, my vision is how do we grow this at a rate that's sustainable? That's encompassing of the values and the pillars that we hold dear as a community and, and all of our citizens. And, and, and that direction needs to be guided with, with some thoughtfulness and mindfulness. Obviously, we'll adhere into the laws and regulations and that need to be happened. But my vision is to watch the growth of this city with a very thoughtful and mindful approach to it. I think there's a lot of things that, as a citizen, as a parent, as a community member, it's, it's actually involved in quite a bit of organizations here. I think there's, we have resources and facilities that, that can really help do things that the city lacks sometimes. And I can get more elaborate on that. But, but for me, is, is the vision is helping and watching us grow, but growing in a thoughtful manner.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Charlie, good to see you. My question is, what would you like to accomplish while you're on the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Councilman Joseph. I think there's a lot, a lot of work that's to be done. And, you know, I've been very fortunate to have attended both City Council and some Planning Commission meetings. I've watched a lot of it on YouTube because for work, by nature of work, I do a little bit of travel. I, I think one of the, the immediate priorities of this city is, is how we develop a downtown community, right? And that, that might allude to the Watson Ranch, it might allude to another area in the city. But right now, on the immediate horizon, it's, it's Watson Ranch. What's happening there? What's that impact to the community? You know, what are the citizens hoping for? What's the reality of what that's gonna look like? And I think that's something that I think, you know, coming on this Planning Commission, because I know there's some new members graduating up to City Council, congratulations, that, you know, that, that needs to be carried forward. You know, the, the energy, the time, the, the knowledge that's been spent putting forth how that development's gonna look and feel and what its impact is to the community and how the community engages with it. I think that would be kind of in my immediate, you know, eighteen to twenty-four month of vision of how that work, how my work would be involved in that. Beyond that, there's other projects that would need to be either vetted or investigated. I know there's a lot of land work and acquisition work for byways and passways that need to be talked about and thought about, too. So, you know, the, the projects that are in play right now are, is a lot of the work that I see myself doing in addition to possibly new projects that, that can be discussed or, again, aligned with the general plan for the city.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Mr. Plummer, good evening.
Good evening.
So why should we select you over other candidates?
That's, that's a tough question. I like that. There's some really good candidates. I've met, I met them in the, in the room over there. And I think, I think first and foremost, the, the best part about this whole process is that you had a lot of candidates to pull from. And it's not an easy job to, to narrow that down because I think there's a lot of value in, in people's diversity and their perspectives, and certainly their life experiences. I won't say I'm better than anybody else because I, I don't believe that. But what I do bring, again, is, is a perspective from, from an industry that's, that's embedded in this, into this county, in this community. So from an agricultural standpoint, from a vineyard standpoint, from a wine business standpoint, to connections up valley as well, which I think is also beneficial to how we operate as a city, is having those relationships and those connections. Pete Richman just got put on the Planning Commission for Napa Valley. I happen to know Pete Richman because he's a vineyard management owner, and I've worked with him. So having those relationships, I think, are important to, to be able to help us manifest what we wanna do in this city. So I, I don't think I'd put myself above anybody, but I think those experiences, the types of connections, relationships you have, the perspective I have of, of working at Valley but living in this community that I hold dear, I, I think that's one of the reasons why I think that I'd, I'd be a good candidate for this role.
Thanks, sir.
I'll give you your next question, Charlie. Describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy.
Resistance from any particular public or otherwise, or just resistance in general?
Just resistance in general.
I can draw on my own experiences, having managed contracts and vendor contracts and whatnot. I, I think that resistance is natural when one side feels that they're not getting what they want or they feel like they're being taken advantage of. So I, I feel like depending on the situation or the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The, the context of that, that dissent or that disagreement, I always look to understand perspective from that, from that, their, their angle, right? What is it that they're trying to accomplish? What is it that, that, that's, that's the roadblock on our end? Or vice versa, what's the roadblock on their end? Coming out of the hospitality world, one of the values that I've always held dear is if you say you can't do something, that's one thing. But if you can't do something, what can you do, right? So I can't do that, but here's what we can do. So it's almost a conflict resolution in a sense where there's a, a kind of a happy medium to it all. I'm not saying that conflict's not gonna happen, and I'm not saying there's resistance is not gonna have to be overcome for certain things. But I, I don't believe that a heavy hand needs to be had in any type of conflict resolution or disagreements. I think that you have to have a contingency plans for whatever proposals there is out there. And that, that's something I've always operated on, is have a Plan A, have a Plan B, have a Plan C. Plan A is our, our recommended path. But Plan B could work, too. Plan C, well, okay, that could work, too. But, you know, it's all been vetted. So I think understanding contingency plans and understanding what the, the hurdles and roadblocks are of, of that dissension or that disagreement, for me, is really key to, to making sure that progress continues moving forward.
Thank you, Charlie. We'll go into our second set of questions and get it back to Councilmember Oral.
Sure. So give us an example of a city you've visited or read about that's great, that has great planning? And tell us why. Alternatively, tell us about a city that has poor planning and why. Either or, or if you have time, both.
I'll start with really poor planning because I've, I've been fortunate in traveling. And the city of Atlanta is terrible planning. Have you ever been to that city? It's like the trains converged in here and every road came in. And there was like madness to how the city grid was laid out. And if you haven't been to Atlanta, I mean, the traffic is insane if you go through Peachtree or whatnot. So from a planning standpoint, I would say absolutely the worst city I've ever been to, from a city planning grid standpoint, is the city of Atlanta. I just, it's terrible. Cities that I do like? I don't know. I'm, I'm not OCD or anything, but I do like uniformity. I do like consistency of things. I like the thoughtfulness and the way things are played out. You look at like Upper Manhattan, you know, I'm not saying it's the best, but they are grid north to south, east to west. It's one through, you know, twenty through two hundred, and it's ABC, right? Whereas you get to Lower Manhattan, it's a mess, right? All the streets are all over the place. So there's a dichotomy in how that city's laid out. From a, from a city perspective, as far as like things that happen, I, I don't know if that's where you're asking, Councilman Oral, but, you know, I, I grew up in Hawaii and I would say it's poor city planning as a whole. But when the new cities came up, city of Kapale came up, there was design processes that were really thoughtful and public transportation. You know, granted the fact that this rail system in Hawaii took twenty years to build and cost billions of dollars, the, the fact that the city of Kapale actually had the foresight to say, this is where this, this thing is going to stop. This is a center we're going to build to make sure there's parking, there's amenities, and there's access to this particular rail system that's gonna come through, in addition to how the city was laid out, both from housing to commercial development to, there's no agriculture out there, but really residential housing. So that's one of the cities that I think really had a thoughtful way of doing it. But they were forced to do that because the, the density of, 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 of land use in Hawaii is so high that you have to, you have to really plan that out well. So probably one of the better cities that I've seen, that's actually laid out that included the use of public transportation.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamatina?
Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests among stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did you or would you approach the situation? And what was the outcome?
Okay, let me see if I can find a good one. I've done a lot of conflict resolution. I, I can, I'll look back about ten years when I was working for a, a company called Constellation Brands. And we had a vineyard development in, in central Napa, right just north of Oakville. And there's a stream that runs through that. And the conflict started because of an organization that identified a, a species of fish that would migrate and habitat there and also spawn there, which is really odd because I didn't, I didn't realize that happened. I wasn't necessarily involved in the actual negotiations of that, but I was involved in the process of the resolution. So what we ended up doing to, to appease the, the environmental group that was, and I, and I don't recall the name of the group, I'm sorry. To appease them was, we went through a certification process to become fish farm friendly. And that certification process lasted almost eighteen months. So it took a long time, there's a lot of money spent on that. But we decided that the process of having that certification, not only applying it to that particular property, but applying it to all properties that the, that the entity, that the company I worked for owned, actually made more sense. One, because of the financial implications of not being able to do it and then having the environmental, environmental impact issues that we would have had to fund and, and, and to fix. Two, the certification process actually alleviated and actually helped us discover some of the other areas of issues that we had on property with drainage and some of the overflow issues that we had from the stream overflowing into the property. So drainage issue was resolved, the EPA issue was resolved. And then the, the fact that the certifications came to life actually made us a better partner with this particular environmental group that we ended up doing more work with.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
All right. Charlie, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the Planning Commission and the Council? Both in terms of you as an individual commissioner as well as you as part of the commission as a whole?
I think for me, as a, as any, and any, any role that I have, it's having time spent with, with individuals, right? And collectively as a whole. So, you know, the, the relationships that I have either currently with any, any council members now or the ones that I, I need to have with council members are always going to be professional first and foremost. I, I think that, you know, understanding, I guess, understanding the council's direction as, as it pertains to the, the city's general plan and what we need to accomplish in that is gonna help, help me, give me the guardrails to better understand the parameters of which I need to operate in. You know, again, I, I don't fully, I don't fully comprehend the full scope of the role still, just yet. But, sorry, but being able to take that guidance and understanding from the people that have been in front of me to also the expertise and knowledge of the people that are sitting here in this room today, I think is important for me as a, as a new commissioner, particularly for the Planning Commission. particularly for the Planning Commission, to be able to better understand how and how I need to act, what's important, and what issues need to be addressed, either immediately or something that we can subsequently look for and plan for in the long term. So, again, I think one-on-one dialogue is always important, both in a public forum or in a private forum. But simply having time and communication, I mean, communication is key to any working relationship.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
All right. Mr. Plummer, what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be and why?
Well, I love that, you know, we are considered a bedroom community. However, I think there's tons of opportunities for this community to develop economic revenue, let's just call it, right? I don't know if I'd call it a priority. One of the things that I've spoken to, let's say, other city members about is a potential sports complex. I think that's something that's of interest to the city, not only as a community, but as a resource and facility for employment and for revenue generation. I think there's a lot of opportunities to explore there. I think other businesses that we decide to allow to adopt operations here in this city should also be major employers of people in this city, not that it's a contingency of application or whatnot. But I think that there should be priorities given to residents that are based here in the city for employment opportunities and any businesses come in. I think, you know, as I look, and again, not fully understanding the scope of our city limits and where it sits, but I know there's warehouses and other things out there, too, that generate taxes for us, you know. But when we look at the city as a whole, what type of operations are going to generate revenue for this city and employment for the city so that people can live and play here at the same time? So, those are things I think that would be important to me and I would prioritize.
Great.
Thank you.
Your final question for tonight. How do you feel about the direction of American Canyon is going with projects like the Broadway District Specific Plan, Green Island, and the Watson Ranch, and the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
Yeah, it's, I've watched some of the Planning Commission meetings, and the NVRG is an interesting one to watch. And I mean, I like the direction it's going. I think there's been some resolution that's been made, particularly in the last meeting. And everybody I've spoken to in the community is applauding the direction that we're moving. I don't think they understand all of the intricacies and dynamics of it all because most of the public doesn't. Even myself, I was, my eyes were pretty wide open to what's really happening there. But I generally applaud, and I like the direction the city's going. And I like the redevelopment, the Broadway development. I like the potential land annexation so that we can have that new bypass going through. I think that's going to mitigate, doesn't resolve, but it mitigates some of the traffic issues we have here in this city. And I think the beautification of this city as a whole, understanding what people first see when they come to this city, is important. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, all palm trees and roses, but there certainly needs to be some aesthetics as to, you know, how close and what those buildings look like when you're driving up and down the streets of American Canyon. I think if we want people to stop and stay and spend money, then, you know, there's going to be some visual perspectives that need to be had in that. So, I generally, overall, I like what's happening. I don't disagree with any of the particular directions on that. How it's been done, I couldn't say. I need to dig more into that, but that's what I'm looking forward to doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we, I appreciate you taking the time and interest in serving our community. This basically concludes our interview phase. We'll have you go back to the room. We'll interview the remaining candidates, and then we'll get back to you after we cast our ballots. But thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you.
I was writing numbers, too, and I just was like, that ain't going to work. So...
It takes two to three years to figure out how to do this.
This is the first time I'm doing it.
Yeah, use the names. Use the names.
Yeah, use the names in the order that you would.
How would you put 1, 2, 3, which?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So, after the first one, the first person is obviously the first one. And after that, which of the two? And so, you're writing the names down each time, but...
Yeah, the first one is the easiest one to choose from.
Yeah, you can write it down before.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome, Pamela Torres.
Hi.
Just to let you know how the process will work tonight, but first I need to ask you, do you know all of the councilmembers?
Yes, but not personally.
Okay. As long as you know who we all are, I mean, that's good. You'll have 20 minutes total time to answer all the questions that we have. We have 10 questions for you.
Okay.
So, we'll ask you a series of questions. We will go through each of them in order. We have, oh, one, we thank you for putting your name in the hat for the Planning Commission. So, thank you for being here and being interested in helping shape our city.
A lot of thought came into it.
Excuse me?
A lot of thought came into it.
That's good. That's good. That's good. So, with that said, tonight, we will start off the questioning with Councilmember David Oral.
David?
Okay.
Ms. Torres, nice to meet you. Please tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Planning Commission.
Pamela Torres, I've been a resident of American Canyon since January of 2010. 2010, yes. Married with two kids. I have a 20-year-old son and a 16-year-old daughter. And the reason why I want to be in the Planning Committee is more so of the phrase "give back" is because American Canyon has done so much for my family. I mean, my family grew up here. My kids went through kindergarten all the way to high school. We've met great friends in American Canyon. My kids developed lifelong friends in American Canyon. And a lot of my husband's friends or childhood friends moved from Hercules all the way here. So, we had that connection already. And AC has given so much to me and my family because I'm an immigrant and everyone here just made it my home. And so, I want to give back, and I want to make it a place where my kids would want to come back and retire here as well. And I want them to come back here to have their, they would want to raise their family here also. And so, I think that's more of the reason why I want to be in the Planning Committee or any commissions as well, or any organizations of American Canyon, is to give back to what the city has given me.
Thank you.
Councilmember Labatina.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My question is, what is your vision for American Canyon?
To answer that, I think I've already also expressed that in my introduction. My vision is for the city of American Canyon to be a city where our kids will come back here and raise their kids as well. Because a lot of our kids now, they leave American Canyon, but then they don't want to come back. It's like, I don't want to come back there. You know, it's American Canyon. But I do want it to be a place where they would want to come back, raise their kids, and, you know, and be surrounded by us as well. Because my mother-in-law lives in Vila, so I'm in Hittenberg. So, it's just an easy connection and have that family core still intact and experience what we've experienced while raising them, you know. So, that is my vision for American Canyon. Of course, there's a lot of things that goes with that vision, but that is my ultimate vision, is for them to come back also and want to raise their family here.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Pamela, welcome. What would you like to accomplish while you're on the Planning Commission?
So, all, I think it seems like I'm noticing all my answers will be connected.
That's probably good.
So, my vision, my vision of having them come here, raise their family also and things like that. So, I would want to have an all-around service by American Canyon, meaning have services or anything that would accommodate our senior citizens, services, activities that would serve our youth, services or any activities for our young families that are here, and also for their young babies, you know, childcare, playdates, playdate in a park, or things like that. So, it's more of an all-around service of American Canyon for their citizen. So, it's more like comparing it to the military community because I lived in a military community where they had everything. They had a lot of services for all the members of a family. And that's what I want to have here in American Canyon.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Hello, Pamela. My question is, why should we select you over the other candidates?
That's a question that's really hard for me to answer, even at work on a personal level. I would rather have them praise me instead of me selling myself. However, in this position, I think my heart is very much into it and where I really would like to give back and because of that, and my experience at work where teamwork and collaboration, having a goal, and, you know, having that one particular goal, work with everybody in the community, I think I am suit, I'm a team player in that regard, where I want to be able to contribute to whatever goals and development we have in American Canyon.
Thank you.
Pam, I have my first question for you, and you're doing great.
I don't know. I'm so scared. I'm...
No, it's a tough, it's a tough position to be standing and sitting.
I'm a cold person right now because everything right now is, my hands are cold.
But you're doing fine. You're doing fine. Describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy.
Again, I think all my answers are kind of connected.
That's fine.
So, with that, so I developed this acronym for myself that I always apply even at work. It's called TWOC. It's T-W-O-C-C, TWOC. It's called teamwork, open communication, collaboration. TWOC. So, having that acronym in my head before I come into a meeting or before I come into a situation that there's decision-making, or there's different opposing views and things like that, I think having those, the TWOC, helps me understand things. So, which means, you know, look at all the pros and cons of every side and get all the facts, the research that you need to do in order for you to have that, you know, be able to make that decision based on facts. But you cannot, in this position, I think you cannot be, you cannot put your emotions in it, your personal feelings about it, because you can't be biased. Otherwise, you won't be able to make a good decision. So, everything has to be based on facts, but at the same time, you know, study all the pros and cons and always apply TWOC because that's the only way I think it would work, because it would also apply to the other people. So, I think that's how I would, I would look at that situation.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we're going to go for the second set of questions, starting off again with Councilmember Oral.
Thank you. And trust me, I know the feeling on public interview process. It's the most awkward, different thing that you've ever done. And so, getting up here for the first time, it's okay. Just have a conversation with this. Thank you.
Right.
My question is, can you give me an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning and tell us why? Alternatively, tell us about a city that has poor planning and why. Either or, or you could answer both if you wish.
Okay. I would say, because I pass through it every day when I commute, city of Emeryville, because the way they develop Bayfront or the Bay Street where they develop housing for the, not yuppies, but the young energetic kids, but at the same time, they also provided all of these activities for them where, in the bottom part, where not only it catered to their demographics, you know, all these restaurants, you know, theater, things like that, but it also attracted people outside of Emeryville. I mean, we all go to Emeryville, you know, like, hey, let's go to IKEA, or let's go eat at their, you know, their food center there, you know, things like that. It's a city where it attracted people from the outside of Emeryville, but at the same time, also catered to their demographics, which is, you know, the young, up-and-coming professionals and things like that. And it's so close, San Francisco, Oakland, you know, going up to Napa. So, I think they really developed that place to cater to them, to that kind of demographics. And I think that's what their main focus, I guess.
Thank you for that. How long have you been in the Bay Area?
I've been here since 2000, when I moved out here, 1993.
Yeah. So, Emeryville is actually a remarkable case study. It has a railroad, it has a freeway. It used to be a dumping ground for a lot of things and the infill. And they turned that into something. So, commend them. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Labatina.
Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests among stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did or would you approach the situation, and what was the outcome?
Honestly, I've never had any situation like that. However, I do hear a lot of the citizens, a lot of my friends, everyday dealings of, why did they do this? Why did they do that? Or, you know, can you call somebody? Do you know anybody in the city council? Or do you know, you know? But for me, I think in dealing with those cases, like, again, my answer in the first one, the earlier about conflicts, is that you have to do your own research, you know. You have to make sure you get all the facts first before you make a kind of an argument or some kind of comment or some kind of anger, you know, words towards what's happening in the city. And so, I think for me, that's the most important thing is really to get all your facts. And, you know, because for me, I mean, even with the President of the United States, if you think about it, the law that's put on his desk has been argued over and over and over, but it all came down from the House. So, basically, just get all your facts first before you make your comments or your, before you say all these feelings.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Okay. Pamela, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the Planning Commission and the city council, both in terms of you as an individual as well as you as part of the Planning Commission?
So, I guess the same thing again, TWOC. I think if we practice TWOC, even on a personal level, I think we would be able to have that relationship, you know, have an open communication, collaborate, and basically always ask the question, what would, what benefit would it give or would it do to American Canyon and to the citizens of American Canyon? Because basically, you're there, the Planning Commission, all the other groups, they only have one goal. One goal is how to make American Canyon better serve its citizens. So, and I think that's the only way we can put in our heads that, to make decisions and to collaborate with other groups of people. And because otherwise, and again, we cannot put our own personal bias or personal feelings because we won't be able to make decisions based on those. So, I think if we just practice TWOC, get all our facts, and at the end of the day, will it benefit the citizens of American Canyon?
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Okay, Pamela. So, what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be and why?
So, I do these walks at night with my friends at the Watson Ranch and all these happenings there, you know, things like that. So, I was very much excited, you know, in terms of the amphitheater, things like that. of the amphitheater, things like that. And I was watching one of the Planning Commission's meetings and in terms of the ruins and one of the, I think the owner of the guy, of the, the ruins has, has all these plans of showcasing the ruins and sponsoring or having events in there. I think for economic development, I think we're already there in terms of planning what we need to do. It's, it's more like showcase what American Canyon can do by having this amphitheater, having an entertainment, things like that, and inviting them to come over. However, having all these businesses, restaurants and amphitheater and things like that, I would want to also prioritize our citizens by at least kind of ask the business that comes in to employ a percentage of their labor force from American Canyon citizens. I mean, the, our, you know, higher American Canyon residents, you know, at least even a portion of their labor force, and also maybe have a program that would help the teens or give them internships during the summer, so they have something to do in the summer, you know? Because teenagers sometimes, if you don't present it to them, they're not going to do anything. So at least if they know that these things are available for them to do, then it's great for everybody, because that way they're doing something, getting out of trouble. But at the same time, also for these businesses to employ American Canyon residents would be a big plus for the city of American Canyon. And on top of that, all this revenues coming in, things like that, maybe have something also for our seniors and, you know, for, for the teenagers, something to do for them. It, it's really more on an all-around wraparound thing where they come here, have all these businesses, and help out our community.
Great, thank you Pam.
Thank you Pam. So this is your final question. How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with the projects like the Broadway District Specific Plan, Green Island, and the Watson Ranch, which you kind of mentioned, and Napa, and the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
I am really, really excited. Like I said, when I was doing all these night walks with my friends, and they were telling me about it, and, you know, of course, they were all excited about it too. And so I'm very excited with all these developments that's happening right now, because it goes back to that first question that you guys asked me, like, why do I want to be here? You know, I'm excited because, I'm excited with all these development, because it's something that I think it's already a first step that, oh, maybe our kids would want to come back here and live here and raise their family here. And so yes, I'm very, how I feel about all these developments, I feel very excited, so.
Okay, well, you know, this basically concludes our interview questions for you tonight. So yeah, you just, why to spread off.
Yeah, no, I'm just scared.
You did make an amazing job. But I appreciate you, we appreciate you, just taking the interest in getting involved in our community and the Planning Commission and things of that nature. So thank you. We're going to have you go back to the room. We'll call you back out here once we tally up all of our votes. But thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
And she'll take you.
Mayor Washington, I've been informed that Arvin has actually returned and wants to interview, but we've asked him to wait until the end.
Okay.
So he had some kind of emergency. He didn't, wasn't sure if he would be back, so he told the people waiting to let Nicole know that he was gone. So, yeah.
Thank you. Good to know. Do you guys take a break? Okay, okay.
Too much, yeah, yeah, yeah.
our local businesses. Hello Shirley.
Good evening.
Good evening. We have one of our councilmembers that stepped out for a minute, and he'll be back in it, and then we'll start, okay?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Loud and clear. So we're back all full force, so good evening and welcome Shirley Coats.
Good evening.
How are you? Just to let you know the process for tonight, we're going to give you twenty minutes total time to answer all of our questions. Each councilmember is going to ask you two questions within that twenty-minute timeframe. We will go in order, the same order all the way through. We want to thank you for submitting your name for the Planning Commission. And with all that said, I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember David O'Rourke for your first question, and then we'll rotate through.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Coat. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Why don't you go ahead and just tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Planning Commission?
Yes, I'm Shirley Coat, and I've, well, let me start with my personal information, I guess. I am, I've been in American Canyon since 2007. I'm married to my junior high sweetheart. We will be celebrating our fortieth year anniversary this September.
Congratulations.
We have two grown children, Stevens thirty-five and Avani's thirty-two. And they were not able to go to attend the schools here in American Canyon. ACHS was still being built, so she was bussed over, my daughter was bussed over to Vintage for high school. So we, we missed out on that. But my husband works for Coca-Cola. He's been there for over, well, he's going to make thirty years. And I work, I'm an Assistant Vice President for Epic Insurance Brokers out of San Francisco. But since COVID, I've been working remote. So I can honestly say, my husband and I both work and live in American Canyon. I threw my hat into the ring because I met a lot of good people while helping some members. I'm also a member of Phil Am, Phil Am Club of American Canyon, and I'm the secretary there. And I've helped a lot of, I've, I've supported a lot of candidates. And I just met a lot of really good people who are passionate about doing something for the city. And I just didn't want to sit on the bleachers to watch anymore. I felt like, although I don't have a lot of, I don't have current experience, as much current experience as half of the people out there. And I, I know half of the people there that are waiting, the applicants. And honestly, if you guys would not pick a bad person there, they're an awesome group. And I would just be privileged to be even considered. And if I am, I come, I, I feel like I want to be, I'm a different, I'm coming from a different perspective. I'm just, you know, your regular citizen who just wants to work hard. And that's one of my strengths, is I'm a very good team player. I'm a strong team player. And I just want to be able to serve in the capacity that this role will allow me to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Good evening and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. My question is, what is your vision for American Canyon?
You know, when we moved here, we liked it because it was a small-town feel. I know everyone talks about growth, and I, I'm for that as well. But if we could, we've, American Canyon has great potential that, that has been met, and a lot of things have, exciting things have happened. There's a lot of things that are in place now that will be forthcoming. And I would just like to see it, help build on it and improve. But I, I mean, I, I want to be honest to say that I would still love to have that small-town community feel still, because that's, that's what attracted us, and that's what we love about the, about the city. And if there is a way that we can, you know, have a, a, a good balance of that, that would be, that would be awesome. And, and I would be, I would be, you know, excited to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
What would you like to accomplish if you were on the Planning Commission?
I would like to accomplish, I, I don't know that I can say I want to accomplish anything individually except to say, I want to be able to contribute. I, I don't mind being the kitchen help, you know? And I don't, I, I, I feel as if I'm nervous now, and I'm stumbling in my words, but you get me with a group of people, and we hash over ideas, and it really brings that out in me. And I, I think I, I think I would accomplish just contributing to what's already built and learn. And it would be an individual growth for me, but I hope with that, that that would benefit and contribute to what we're trying to accomplish as being a planning committee for, for the city. I, I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hello Shirley.
Hi Brando.
So, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Yeah. They are an awesome group of people. And they have already put in their time and their efforts, a lot of them in their own ways to the community. I have the privilege of knowing them and learning from them. I have nothing fancy on my resume, but I'm just going to say, I would like to be considered to be a group of them so that I can learn and grow and contribute as well. To come out and just be one of those people who walks their dogs every day, or just, you know, being a regular resident, maybe I can bring some kind of perspective from that aspect, you know? Again, you guys would not go wrong picking any one of them, and I would just be privileged if I would be considered to be among them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay Shirley, I have my first question for you, and I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, I know you say you're nervous, but you're doing an awesome job.
Ah, thank you.
Okay, so, describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
I, I don't, being the, the new person to the committee, I, I would listen first, because you have to. And then, if I felt passionate enough about it, I would make sure that I'm ready with, with, with my notes or with my, I would do research, and I would have my points. I, I wouldn't, if, if I have a subject that I feel strongly about, then I absolutely would, would be prepared for that. You know, again, I, I, maybe I'm, I don't have an idea of this, but I would, I would think that we would collectively come together. So the resistance is always going to be there, it's just the way that person's going to handle it. And I have no problem with sitting back and listening if that's the case, but if I have something to say, I will voice it. Once that's there and, and, and there's still, you know, back and forth, then, then it's, it's, and I don't even think it's going to be that way, you know? If, if there's something that I have to bring to the table and something, somebody else opposes it, and I put out my points and, you know, it's still, you know, not agreed upon, I, I would think that everybody would come collectively and, and, and I would, you know, I, I would just take it at, at that moment and, and see. But I'm, I'm, I'd like to say that my, being a team player, you have to be flexible, too. And, and again, me being, if, if I were, I know that my current experience is not as much as my peers. So that, I would really, you know, take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. So you're halfway there. We got the, the second half of questions, and, and you're, so it's all downhill now, so I'm going to give it back to Councilmember David O'Rourke. David?
And I'll say this again, you know, public interviews are the worst. I've done plenty of them. Hang in there, you're doing fine, just have a conversation with us.
Thank you.
It's super awkward, so, yeah. Can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning and tell us why? Alternatively, you can tell us about a city that has poor planning and why? Either one or both, if you feel like you can do that.
I'm sorry, I probably will sound like a broken record. I really like Benicia. And if we can mirror a blueprint like that, I, I would think that would be great. They've, they, they stay small, but they're strong. You go to their downtown, they've got their balance of mom-and-pop shops, they've got their bigger restaurants, they've got their chains. And, excuse me, they, they were still, they're still able to maintain without really expanding or, or, you know, too much. And they've, they've been constant. And there's, they gather, where they gather, there's, it's locals and tourists. And I think that's just so cool. The other would, would, I was going to say something else, but maybe, maybe I, I won't. But, yeah, maybe I'll, I'll just stop there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Describe a situation where you had to, to navigate conflicting interests among stakeho, stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did or would you approach the situation and what was the outcome?
So are we talking about a, a situation that I would, you know, see, or something that I've already handled?
Either way.
Oh. You know, again, I, I sit and listen first. And again, if there are subjects that I don't feel, I strongly feel opposed to, then I do voice it. But again, at the end of the day, it's got to be collective. So once, there's got to be flexibility. And it depends on the matter, it depends on the situation, but I would do my homework first. And if I feel not satisfied with, with what the, the outcome is, then I, I might take it to the higher-ups and just get their feedback, or talk to peers and get their feedback. I, I would like to have it resolved in a healthy situation that benefits all, you know? And so those would, would be the steps I think I would take. And hopefully that would resolve the situation. Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Okay. How would you go about developing a good working relationship between the Planning Commission and the City Council from the perspective of you as an individual commissioner, as well as you as part of the overall- as well as you as part of the overall commission?
You know, I, I think that there should be, um, even though they're too separate, we're all under the same umbrella, and that there should be a, a constant dialogue, some kind of communication, whether it be, and I don't know if this is already in place, but I would think meetings, you know, um, just, just, and it doesn't even have to be formal, just to get together because, um, we all get into our own world as when we were working in, in our personal lives. Um, but we all have a common goal here. So, um, maybe, maybe bagels and coffee or whatever, you know, or potluck. Somewhere where we can just relate on a personal level as well, where we don't, where, where, where we won't have that defense and we would be able just to communicate because that's, I feel that's the most important thing, to have, um, open communication between the two groups because you work together.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Okay Shirley, so what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be and why?
Economic developments?
Economic development priorities.
Priority. I feel that, um, that's already maybe in place. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking maybe, um, the biggest headaches are actually the, the roads and the, the congestion and especially with the buildings of the apartment houses and, um, but, but, but I know that that, that's in, in place with the, I guess, the Newell Row, uh, the road off of, uh, oh, now I'm blanking. Is it the Newell Road off of, to, to 29?
Scott Kelly?
Newell Extension?
Okay, yes. And, um, so I'm, I'm thinking congestion and traffic is, is one of our biggest headaches. Um, economic developments is, and then we've got the, um, we've got the, the, the construction of the, um, the plazas that's going up. And so I just, I just feel like they're, these things that are my, of my concern are already, things are put into place and the motion's already going. And, um, I would just like to be able to contribute, to be able to see and, um, help build upon that and, and go, um, go further with that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay Shirley, last question. We're almost there. How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with projects like the Broadway District Specific Plan, Green Island, and the Watson Ranch, uh, and the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
Again, it's, I, I know that these are already put in motion and, um, and it's exciting because we are, um, we're supposed to be known as the, the gateway, you know, the, the entrance or the gateway to Napa and not just the, the pass-through. And this will be, all of these things are, um, being done. And the fourth, the, the plans for it would be, um, so that we don't have to go out of town to enjoy being with our kids at, at, um, doing things with them or, um, having, eating at a restaurant. We can stay and spend our money here and tourists will want to come and do the same. Um, I don't know what the future plans are and which is probably why I threw my hat in the ring too, because I would be interested to see what else, what else is, is, is going to be implemented. But, um, as far as what we've got going on now, it's exciting. It's exciting.
Good, good, good. Well, this actually concludes the interview, so breathe.
Yeah.
You know, we all appreciate, that's the simple fact that you even, you know, consider putting your name in the hat, you know? It's amazing that you're, that you're concerned about the, the growth of our city. So you can breathe now.
I know.
You know, we're going to have you go back to the room with Nicole, uh, and then we'll call everybody back in when we have the tally of the votes. But you did an amazing job.
I appreciate all of your time. Thank you for even considering my application. And so if you'll excuse me, I'm going to go throw up now.
Yeah. That's funny.
Get up there Beth.
Yeah, well Beth, she used to be up there, but I'm saying, but they, I, we, I know, I know how difficult that is. Yeah. We're not all veterans like Ken.
In 2017, I did it for four hours.
Brutal. You do?
Yeah, it was started with adjectives for the last person to go when it listens to her. One year she listened to every other.
Good evening and welcome Scott.
Good evening.
Uh, just to let you know the process for tonight, um, you have 20 minutes total time. Uh, the council, all, all five of us will ask you two questions, um, you know, in sequence. Uh, we want to make sure that you know we appreciate that you have put the interest in of being part of the Planning Commission, um, and, uh, applying. Uh, with that said, uh, tonight we'll start it off with Councilmember David Oral and then we'll rotate around.
Okay. Mr. Meyer, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Uh, tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Planning Commission.
All right, uh, my name is Scott Meyer. I'm married, I have three grown children, five grandchildren. Um, I work for the Vallejo Unified School District as a carpenter. I've been there 29 years. Um, I've coached Little League here in, in American Canyon. I have, uh, ran youth groups at churches here, uh, at a church here. Um, for those of you that don't know, I have a small DJ business that I run in American Canyon. It's quite successful. Um, the reason why I want to be here is, um, I've seen American Canyon grow quite a bit and I want to be part of that growth now for the, for the next years to be coming up. Um, I want to be a liaison between the community and the council and a voice back to the community from you guys.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lamatina?
Good evening and thank you for being here. My question is, what is your vision for American Canyon?
Um, my vision for American Canyon is, um, I love the growth. I want to be the city that people come to and say, wow, they know what they're doing. Um, I want to be, I want our city to be, to remain safe and diverse and healthy.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, Scott, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
And you forgot to mention you're also in a.
Oh yeah.
The Polonies Club, so.
I am the president, vice president now of Kiwanis. I ran president two years in a row.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, so if you get on the Planning Commission, what would you like to accomplish while on the Planning Commission?
Um, well, my goal is to implant the decisions from you guys in a healthy manner. Does what you say go, what you say brings to us and we can collaborate that and bring it back to our community in a healthy manner.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Cruz?
Scott, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. All right, so Scott, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Well, I think I would be a good candidate, um, because I have a passion for the city. I have a passion for the growth. Um, I have a strong voice and a fair voice. Um, and I also have a good rapport with our community, which I think would help quite a bit.
Great, thank you sir.
Okay Scott, I have the first of my two questions. Um, describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
Um, well, I would have to do the research from both sides, not just one side. Um, do the research, come up with some kind of understanding that would make both parties happy. And, um, mainly just do the research and make sure that you're right and, and why.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, we're halfway there. So we are going to go back to, um, Councilmember Oral for his second set of questions for you.
Thank you. Um, you, can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning and tell us why? Alternatively, you can tell us about a city that has poor planning and tell us why. Or I'll give you a third option, you can answer, give us both examples, but you only have to do one or the other.
Okay, I kind of can give both, um, but I just want to touch, uh, I think San Francisco, uh, has been voted to have, uh, a great quality with the diverse amenities that they have there and the, and all the obstacles that they have to face. But I want to concentrate on the bad, the poor. I've worked for Vallejo. Um, I see a lot of misuse of money, I see a lot of poor planning, uh, Walmart being one of them, which we benefit from now at times, uh, but the revenue part of it we benefit from. And, um, working with the kids, I see the misuse of the money and the decisions that they make and the programs that they have to close down, the impact on their community. And if you just watch any news, you see the impact on the community in Vallejo. So I think they need a little help.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Lamatina?
Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests amongst stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did or would you approach the situation and what was the outcome?
Can you repeat that?
Absolutely. Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests amongst stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did or would you approach the situation and what was the outcome, if any?
Again, you would have to do your research and find out each side of the situation, um, find out the right and wrong and explain why it's right or why it's wrong. And, um, I feel that you got to be a team, you got to be, um, all one and hopefully everything will work out if you present the right, um, the right things.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joseph?
Okay Scott, how would you go about developing a good working relationship between the Planning Commission and the City Council, both as an individual commissioner, but also as part of the commission as a whole?
Well, um, like I said, we're all family, um, but we need to be a team. So, uh, we have to have a good relationship and communication. It's communication, communication. If, um, if, if there's an issue on either side, communicate, get it out.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cruz?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Scott, what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be and why?
Um, well, I think we bring new families with buildings, we bring new families. Um, and we need thriving businesses to employ the families that we bring in. Um, I think that we're in the middle of two cities. One that is Napa, which is kind of expensive to hang out there and spend all your money. And the other is Vallejo, that is unsafe. So I feel that we're in the middle and we can monopolize and have the spending here and, uh, make, make the money here and before it goes to the other two cities. We can monopolize on that.
Great, thank you sir.
Okay, uh, I have the final question for you. Um, and that question is, how do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with the projects like Broadway's District Specific Plan, Green Island, and the Watson Ranch and the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
Um, I love the direction that our city is going. Um, I would love to see these projects get finished because they have been going on for quite a while. And they're great projects. I would like to see them get finished so that we can start new ones and, um, bring in more revenue, bring in more families, cater to elderly people and youth. Um, yeah, I think, I, I love the direction it's going now. I just, we just need to keep it safe and healthy as we grow.
Thank you, thank you. Well Scott, this concludes, uh, your interview portion for today. Uh, I think you did a, a good job. Uh, we appreciate your interest in, in, uh, applying for the Planning Commission. Um, we still have a process that we have to go through with a couple more interviews and then we'll call everybody back in and then we'll give the results of that. But thank you for putting your name in the hat.
Again, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome Shelby.
Hello, is this, I was advised on how to position the microphone, but.
You sound good.
Okay.
Clear.
Hi.
Just to let you know the process for tonight, um, you have 20 minutes total time.
Okay.
The council here will ask you two questions apiece. We'll. The council here will ask you two questions apiece. We'll ask you systematically. We, we all thank you for putting your name in the hat, for even considering putting your name in the hat for the planning commission, so we thank you for doing that. Tonight, we will start off by councilmember David Oral asking the first question and then we'll rotate it around in that fashion.
Okay, sounds good.
Scott, correct?
Yes, that's me.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the planning commission.
Sure. So my professional background relates to planning. I've worked at Caltrans for about six and a half years now in project development. So seeing projects through, from when they're scoped through when they go to construction. I work as a biologist, which is obviously not directly relevant, but I see a lot of the planning process, a lot of my job is doing, making sure that environmental regulations are followed, applying for permits, working with different agencies. So I've gotten a good sense of what regional planning looks like in the Bay Area and how that process happens. And prior to Caltrans, I worked at AC Transit doing transit planning, bus, bus route planning, and civil rights compliance. So I think I have a fairly well-rounded understanding of different aspects of planning processes. I also completed master's coursework in geography at San Francisco State. And in that process, took quite a few classes in urban planning, city planning, and understanding both, you know, the more cut and dry things about like zoning and how development happens in different municipalities. But also, you know, getting, getting an idea of what, how planning decisions influence a city, you know, like what, what the city ends up looking like and how it functions for its residents. Yeah, so I think that understanding is part of why I feel qualified. And it's also made me really interested in wanting to make sure that the place where I live and where I'm raising my family, you know, is, is a nice place to live, is an enjoyable place where, you know, people are out in their community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Good evening and thank you for being here. My question is, what is your vision for American Canyon?
Yeah, just a really light question. I feel like American Canyon is at a bit of a crossroads right now with development. I know that there have been a lot of changes in recent years and it seems like more changes just keep coming, right? We have more and more people moving here, including my own family, I've been here about a year and a half. Ooh, sorry. And, you know, and I feel like there are a lot of opportunities for both growth and development in American Canyon. And there are conversations to be had about, you know, what kind of development will lead to a really livable and enjoyable place, right? And for me, I think that I would love to see a town where, you know, right now we're pretty car-dependent. And there are lots of, you know, everybody has their own complaints about the traffic. And I think that creating a place where shorter trips, you know, just across town, just down the street, you know, are easier to do without a car. Not only would be good for traffic congestion, but would, you know, get, cars can be very isolating, especially for short trips. If people are more comfortable out walking or biking, you're more likely to interact with your neighbors, you're more likely to actually talk to other people on the street. It builds community in that way. And so I think that's part of my vision, is like somewhere where, yeah, we are talking to each other, meeting each other more, more organically.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes, thank you for being here. Tell me, what would you like to accomplish if we put you on the planning commission?
I mean, if I were on the planning commission, I don't, you know, I want to be part of the conversation of how American Canyon develops in the next few years, basically. I, you know, don't harbor any illusions that I have, you know, my own agenda getting through as part of the commission. But I do think that I try to maybe a different perspective. I know a lot of small business leader, small business owners get into local government, which is excellent. But I think I provide a little bit of a different perspective. Coming more from like government planning background than business. And I think that both sides of that coin are important for overall conversation. So, yeah, I don't think I specifically have, you know, my own, like, I need to get this done. But I think that I would be a valuable voice in the conversation in making these decisions in the next few years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Good evening Shelby.
Good evening.
So Shelby, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Well, I've had a chance to talk to most of the other candidates in the waiting room and they seem stellar. I know that, you know, I, yeah, they seem great, like great people, I enjoy talking to them. Yeah, I think the fact that I, you know, I'm interested in the long-term future of American Canyon. I have two little kids. We're planning on staying here to raise them, have them go to school here. I want, you know, I want this to be a nice town for them to grow up in. And, yeah, I think that my professional background, like I said, offers a somewhat unique perspective. And, yeah, I'm committed to this town and wanting it to be, like I said, a, a safe and enjoyable place for my kids to grow up. And, yeah, I don't, definitely don't have anything put me over the other candidates. Like I said, they seem like great people. But, yeah, I think that's why I would make sense.
Great.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
And Shelby, I've, I've asked other candidates today, but I failed to ask you.
Okay.
If you're aware of all of us, of the people on the council, have you had an opportunity to meet with any of us or talk to?
I have not met with any of you, but I have read about you on the American Canyon City's website. And I, you know, got to know you as, you know, at least a few of you as candidates in the last election. So, yes, I have not had a chance to meet any of you in person prior to tonight.
So before I ask my first question, I just want to kind of give a little quick introduction of, have us all kind of introduce ourselves.
Sure.
Okay. I'm Pierre Washington, lived in American Canyon for 18 years, retired law enforcement. I currently work for a pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical company. And been on city council for four years prior to now and about four weeks as the city, as the manager, I mean, as a, as a mayor of the city. And I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Joseph to introduce himself as well.
I've been in town for over 30 years. I've been on the council the longest now. So I've been on the council since 2010, yeah. And served in the, served in the city of American Canyon prior to that. So I have a similar background, government and finance and management. So I'm the old guy now.
Yeah, he's the old guy.
Councilmember Oral?
Serving on the council since 2017, been here since 2005. Thank you for being here.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Melissa Lamatina, resident of American Canyon for 48 years. I'm a social worker with the county of Napa, vice president of Seropnumus International.
And councilmember Cruz?
Hey Shelby, we, we flip roles now. Now we get to, I gave you our wives and a little bit about herself. I've been here since 2001, so I've been here for quite some time. Four kids, all went through all the schools here, grew up here and so forth. Retired law enforcement, former military, I was just on the planning commission and now I'm here and welcome. Thank you for coming.
Okay, so now I got that out. I just wanted to make sure I was fair to you because I did ask other candidates and applicants today if they were familiar with all the people on the council. So, so my question is, describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
Well, I would expect there to be resistance from someone working with, do you mean specifically resistance within the commission or from the public or both or either?
Whatever, I mean, you could give me a life experience that you've had or, you know.
Yeah, I think that when it comes to public planning matters that are going to affect residents, you're always going to meet resistance from somebody. Everybody, you know, most people get pretty passionate about where they live and what their town looks like. And I think it's normal for those passions to sometimes be in conflict, you have different ideas of what, everyone wants it to be better, we just have different ideas of what better.
Right.
You know, how to get there. And, yeah, I think that if I proposed an idea and was met with resistance, I mean, I would take into consideration how much resistance. If literally everyone is saying, no, this is a terrible idea, we don't want this, then it's dead in the water. If it's, you know, a couple of different opposing ideas, you know, then I think that's, if it's coming from within the commission, I think that's a conversation, you know, why, where are we coming from that we have these different ideas? You know, what goal are we seeking and why, you know, if we have the same goal, you know, what, what's going on that's causing us to get there in different ways? And, yeah, I think, and if it's coming from the public, you know, you need to take that into consideration. You're representing the public, serving the public. And I think that, you know, it's important not to take disagreement personally. It doesn't mean anything about you as a person, it just means people have different ideas of how they think things should be done. And, yeah, I think that having those conversations and trying to figure out, you know, why we have disagreements and where we're coming from is important. And if, you know, we have those conversations and I still feel really strongly about my idea, then keep trying to find ways to, to, you know, see who does support me and like, you know, and try and go from there. But, yeah, I mean, I envision the planning commission as being a pretty collaborative process. There's a reason that it's five people and not just one person making decisions by themselves. Yeah, so.
Okay, well, thank you Shelby. Well, you're midway through there, so we're going to go back to councilmember David Oral.
Can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning and tell us why? Alternatively, you can tell us a, how to see they had bad planning and tell us why.
Sure.
And you can answer just one of those or you can give us an example of both?
Yeah, I think, I think that basically every city has good and bad things about the way it was planned, right? I think that there are parts of most cities that are, are really nice and parts that are a little more like, what happened here? How did this get here? I think that, I mean, I personally really feel comfortable in, you know, places that have like a downtown, some sort of like feel where it's very walkable, you have storefronts that, you know, there's parking, but it's not the primary focus. So locally, I would say, honestly, Georgia Street in Vallejo, it feels a bit like that. Obviously Vallejo's a big place there. Like I said, there are good and bad things about planning in every place. I lived in downtown Oakland for a number of years. And again, like the ability to, you know, walk out of my apartment and go to restaurants or shops or whatever, get on, get on Bart. Very nice. Other things about Oakland, not quite as nice. You know, other places I've visited, I would say that, you know, places that have like a subway system where, you know, it depends too, because it's a matter of population density, right? Like it makes sense in really dense places to have like a subway or, you know, a train or something like that where I was like, that's probably never going to make sense for American Canyon, just because we're not that big a town. But I grew up in a really small town in Michigan and that was on the waterfront, you know, we have wetlands here. And, you know, despite being a really small town, like had the heart of like a downtown, but again, like walkable streets, storefronts that were engaging, parks everywhere. Yeah, so I think those are all positive things. I think that there also are, you know, I've visited and spent time in a lot of suburbs as well that feel more like suburbs than towns, if that makes sense. You know, which I think based on what I know about, you know, what I've read in my time in American Canyon, there's a big effort to create the sense of a town community. And like, I know that that exists, people have been here for decades making that happen. But, you know, I think that people who aren't, who haven't spent a lot of time in American Canyon, when I tell people that I live here, they're like, oh, that's the, the 29 goes through there, right? And that's kind of what they have. And like, well, actually, if you live there, there's a lot more going on. I'm so sorry. There's a lot, there's a lot going on, you know, there are wonderful residential neighborhoods, you know, there's a lot of, a lot happening here. But, you know, I do think that there are a lot of, like my husband's from Southern California and grew up in a suburb that feels very much like a suburb, like they're, it doesn't feel intentionally planned. You know, there are a lot of subdivisions and not a lot of places to gather, if that makes sense. Like outside of someone's like workplace or school, there's not really a lot of like third spaces. And so I think that that's, one of the aspects of good planning is creating those, you know, finding ways to create those spaces for people so that there is opportunity for more community, you know, rather than just going from your house to work and back and that's all you're doing. Yeah, sorry, that was a little long-winded, but
Thank you.
I got there.
Good answer.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests among stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups.
Sure.
How did or would you approach the situation and what was the outcome?
So I have a number of examples of that from my job. So I would say in particular, one example that comes to mind is, Caltrans is required via result of a lawsuit to implement trash capture devices along the roadway. It's, you know, to prevent trash from just going straight into, into the bay during like big storms or something, right? So like obviously picking up litter is important, but at the ends of drainages, just these big devices to catch the trash. You, great for the environment, right? You're stopping trash from getting in the waterways, who would be against that? However, the proposed location for a lot of these happened to coincide with protected habitat for frogs and salamanders. And so ironically, you end up with like US Fish and Wildlife Service and California Department of Fish and Wildlife being opposed to the placement of some of these devices. being opposed to the placement of some of these devices, um, that are meant to keep trash out of the water. And so, you know, kind of a little, a little crazy to think about. Um, and obviously no one's opposed to the idea of these. It's just the particular placement of them, right? Um, and so that, uh, is an ongoing discussion in my workplace. Um, it's been going on for a couple of years. Um, and it's, yeah, I've been in meetings where you're really, um, working to not anger anyone.
The little whistle thing is just telling that we, we're at that twenty-minute time frame. So we're gonna try to wrap up the last three questions. I still want you to have the opportunity to answer the questions.
I appreciate that.
Um, and, um, I thank you for that answer that you just gave and I'm gonna move it on to.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I just wanna realize that we did take some of her time by talking about ourselves, so we should.
We did, we did, and I realized that as well. So we're gonna, um, have Vice Mayor Joseph.
All right, well, Shelby, how would you go about building a good working relationship between the planning commission and the city council, both in terms of you as an individual commissioner as well as you as part of the commission as a whole?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, the basis for good relationships is communication, right? Um, and so I know that there are already structures in place of when meetings happen and who attends the meetings and, you know, that kind of more formal, um, setup, uh, to make sure that there's information exchanged back and forth. Um, I think that showing up on time, being respectful of everybody's time is important, an important first step, um, to avoiding resentments. Um, because, you know, we're all busy people here, here in the evening. Uh, yeah, and keeping lines of communication open, uh, seems important. Um, you know, staying on task, but being friendly too, um, you know? Uh, but I think that clear communication is probably the foundation of everything. Um, you know, and if there are conflicts that arise, whether it's, you know, interpersonal or just more, um, you know, based in like a particular project or planning decision or something. Um, you know, again, like I said earlier, not taking disagreements personally, um, and not making it personal, um, in that way. Um, you know, again, trying to assume best intentions of everyone. Um, it's general practice in my life, makes it easier to get along with people. Um, but yeah, I think, um, I think that's the, that's the start.
Thank you.
You know, I'm unlimited time here.
Uh, council member Cruz.
Okay Shelby, so what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be and why?
Um, well, I think that I think, I know that there, you know, are a lot of decisions about, um, businesses coming to American Canyon, what kind of businesses we want, what we want town to look like. Um, you know, obviously providing, any opportunity to provide jobs for residents is very important. Um, ideally, it's nice if people are able to work near where they live. It'd be more involved in their community in that way, um, not have to commute really far. Um, but yeah, I also think that, um, when we're talking about economic growth, it's important to still consider sustainability, environmental impact, um, and, you know, the culture of our town. Um, yeah, I think that, um, economic growth obviously is important. Uh, having, having job sources for people is very important. Um, but not at the destruction of our beautiful place where we live.
Thank you Shelby.
And I have the last question for you.
Yes.
And that would be, how do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with projects like the Broadway District Specific Plan, Green Island and the Watson Ranch and also Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
Yeah, um, yes. So, so you listed a lot of, a lot of plans right there and a lot of projects. Um, I think that I've, I've been very impressed with the progress I've seen in American Canyon, even just in the short time that I've lived here. Um, I know that we are part of like larger regional plans too, um, in terms of transportation for, you know, the roadways, uh, traffic calming for uh, regional bike paths, all of that. Um, also am aware of Watson Ranch and the, sorry, the Garden and Ruins. The full, the full name of that, I always forget exactly.
Napa Valley.
Napa Valley Garden and Ruins, yes. Um, yeah, I I know that there are some hurdles to some of those developments. Um, and, you know, I am not a full expert on those specific issues. Um, but I think that you know, the choices that I've seen the city making in the last couple of years, um, as far as development, makes a lot of sense. Um, I know that there is an effort to, you know, create this like, uh, area to act as a downtown. Um, and to, you know, grow the city in a responsible way. Um, you know, obviously everywhere in the Bay Area needs to build more housing. Um, we're working on that, but need the resources to support those people as well. Um, and I know that's an ongoing, uh, issue of conversation, um, for the city. Um, but yeah, I've, I've been impressed with the direction that I see things going generally over the last couple of years.
Okay, well, um, this pretty much concludes this part of the interview piece. You know, we, uh, appreciate your interest in serving our community. Um, and so we have one more interview to do. Uh, we'll have Nicole escort you back to the, uh, the waiting room, if you will, the green room. No, we have one more, we have.
One more, one more person.
Yeah, um, yeah, and then we'll call everybody back in with the, with the end result, but you did a great job.
Yeah, thank you so much for taking the time to talk to me.
Okay, I don't appreciate you doing the research on all of us too. That's nice.
Yeah.
Always a good thing.
Thanks.
Good evening, Arvin. Glad you're able to make it.
Good evening, thank you. Yeah, I have to go. I'm in the emergency. My grandson had the accident, so I have to run over there.
Yeah, well, I hope everything's okay.
He's fine now. I, I took care of that part.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting for me.
Oh, no problem at all. Just to let you know the process for tonight, uh, you'll have twenty minutes, uh, total time to answer, uh, ten questions that we all have. Uh, we'll ask you one at a time. Um, uh, we all thank you for, you know, considering and put your name in the hat for the planning commission, you know, and the fact that you want to serve our community.
Yeah.
Um, with that said, tonight, we're gonna start off with, uh, council member David Oral asking the first question and then we'll rotate through.
Okay.
Hi, Arvin. Happy New Year.
Hi, happy new year to you.
Hey, so I think everybody knows you, but I still want you to tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the planning commission.
Uh, my name is Arvin Nissel. I live in American Canyon for the last thirty years. And, uh, I run the store for the last twenty, forty years and I do my best to help the community. And I also introduce my culture to this city, like a multicultural event or a holy festival or fire festival in my house. And sometime I do started about laughing yoga, so people can laugh, but they didn't like it, so I say, okay, don't laugh it, that's fine. But, uh, we serve the community all the time. That's what I thought to work for this, this planning commission, maybe. My ideas, my working, my experience in this field can help the planning commission. That's why I am joining this one and, uh, I hope I will do my best to work the city. I understand the people who come to us. We understand their, uh, problems. We talk to them. I talk to them every day. And they spoke with me what they have problem, what they, how they do it. But it's up to the city how they do it. But I solve my problem in the store definitely. I help them. I communicate with them and they are very satisfied. That's why I want to join planning mission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next will be council member Lamatina.
Good evening and thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, Molly.
My question for you is what, what is your vision for American Canyon?
My vision is very expand, very open and, uh, we like to bring some more things in the town. So people can enjoy it and kids can stay in some place where they can have fun after the school. So have good roads, good education and park is good. That what we're looking for. That's my vision to the city. And we have a big trail in, in the town. People come from different directions, to different places. But, uh, my vision is this, that it should be a beautiful place and people like it. That what we are trying to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Arvin, welcome.
Well, thank you.
What, if you, if you, yeah, if you were on the planning commission, what would you like to be able to accomplish?
My main thing will be to accomplish that, uh, people got good service and they, what they needed can be done for them and help the, um, public. That is my main thing. Public is happy, we are happy. And we are trying to do it in a commission that all these, uh, projects is going on in town should be done properly. And we work as a team, not as a single person. So we work as a team and we work, make a decision accordingly. We don't do it, okay, don't go against anybody or do something wrong, but work as a, as a combined people altogether as a team of the work. So planning mission work as a group, not individually.
Thank you.
Uh, council member Cruz.
Arvin, good evening.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Okay, so, Arvin, why should we select you over the other candidates?
Why you select me? But I think, uh, I have big experience in this, uh, public service. I'm serving the community for the last many years. And I'm in diversity because I bring all the people together in, in my events and they love it. So similarly, experience can help the planning commission. That if we bring something new, maybe city or the council or a public, uh, commission can help it. So that's my vision to join public commission. So I can do my best experience in town. This is my dream to be a public, to be a commission. Planning commissioner. That what I will do it and I will do my best.
Thank you, Arvin.
Thank you.
Uh, my first question for you, Arvin, uh, is describe how you might handle a situation if you met resistance when introducing a new ideal or a policy?
In that one, it's a, it's a joint decision, not by my own decision, because we can, you can give your ideas how to do it. But all these other members will, will work together and make a decision. We don't, uh, individually involved in this too much, but we work as a group. Planning mission is a group. And we try to resolve it. Any situation come up, we'll try to work it out. So that's my vision that we are helping the public and we are trying to do our best for the interest.
Thank you, Arvin. And now we'll go back and rotate back up to, uh, city council member Oral for his second question.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, so, Arvin, can you give an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning and tell us why? Alternatively, tell us about a city that has poor planning and why? And you may want to answer both, but you only have to answer one.
Can you say one more time, please?
Give us an example of a city you've visited or read about that has great planning. Tell us why, or tell us about a city that has poor planning and why?
Okay, your first question is, I answer this way, that, uh, every planning commission has their own view. Every city has their own planning. If I say this place, city is good or that city is good, it's not like that. Wherever you live, that is the main things, is a beautiful place to live in. We don't, we can't compare it because our city is very small city. It's only, only twenty, twenty-four years old. And the big cities are old, fifty years, hundred years. So my, we, my point is this one is if you live in the city, that city is good for you and you create, bring some more ideas to make it more beautiful. We can't compare for me, I'm say Benicia or Alamo or other places. Where you live, that's the best thing. This is a bad one is, nothing is bad. It's only your vision or your thought, which is good, which is bad. There but, then, nothing bad in this world. Everything is beautiful. God created everything nice, but only how we use it. That's the only issues.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, council member Lamatina.
Describe a situation where you had to navigate conflicting interests among stakeholders such as developers, residents, environmental groups. How did or would you approach the situation and what was the outcome of any?
With the builders or developers, they have their problems. If they have no problem, they won't be a developer. So we work as a, as a planning commission, how to resolve it. I can't resolve myself. It's a all commission, commissioners or planning commissioners are the decision together. That's why we work together. So all these developer has a problem, so we listen to them and we narrow it down, how we can dissolve it. Maybe they could, they will lose something, we lose something, make it a, make it in a middle point. Okay, this is a situation, work this way. So that what I will do it, that what I think that's the right way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Okay, Arvin. If you were on the planning commission, how would you go about building a good working relationship between the commission and the city council, both as an individual commissioner and as part of the overall planning commission?
As a planning minister, we should work as a team. One thing is there definitely. We don't go against anybody. Okay, I don't like him. I don't like that person, but as a team, we work together. That's the first thing we should do it. As my individual, whatever experience I have, I can go by that one. Twenty years, thirty years, it's been, since I left my college, I'm an independent worker. I never work under anybody. So we have maybe sixty years experience I have. We work, combine it and make it sure that things are resolved. sixty years experience I have. We work, combine it, and make it sure that things are resolved. We don't want to create any problem, but we work it better well. So all the commissions come together, and we make a decision. It's not individual person decision again, but we try to work it out, that council will make a final decision. Planning Commission should give them a better idea, how we can make it better in the city. That's my main thing is for that one is.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, Arvin, what do you think the city's economic development priorities should be, and why?
Economic development is a good question. We have to make a development in the town, like its roads, schools, parks. We have to develop it, make it this one. It's very important for the community, because they can go some places, and stay there, and enjoy it. If you don't have any park, or any good roads, and other thing, take hours together to reach one place to another place. How we can do it, we can't do it. So development has to be a good, good schools, people like it, visit over here, they can come over here and join it, and good parks, where children can enjoy it. That way, it should be like that. That's my view is for that one.
Thank you, Arvin.
And, Arvin, I have the last question for you. And I know it's been a tough night for you, you know, with your son.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. How do you feel about the direction American Canyon is going with the projects like Broadway District Specific Plan, Green Island, and the Watson Ranch, and also Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens?
I attend all the meetings with the development in the town. Planning Commission did a very wonderful job when they are on the place, and they advise the council very nicely. And everybody make a very good decision about the development of these projects. They work together. They work it very nicely. And all the builders over here, all the developers were there, and they negotiate all the things together. And they succeed in the projects. It's working right now, very good. It's mean that Planning Commission and the council work together to make it better. That what I think.
Okay, well, thank you, Arvin. That concludes our questions for the interview for tonight. We are going to tally up our votes. We'll probably have you escort it back out to the...
Actually, um, Arvin, you can take a seat now, because for open session deliberations, we invite everybody to come back into the council chamber.
Could you go back?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, you have a seat, because they're gonna bring everybody else back in here. Thanks, Teresa.
Sure.
And should we all do our tally?
Yeah. So, um, there's a smaller sheet that just has three spaces, where you're gonna select your top three people. It does not have to be in a certain order. And when you just write those down, and pass them down to me, I'm gonna tally them up. When everybody's turned them in, I'll announce all of the, how many votes each person received.
Let me look first.
We're waiting on the wise guy here.
Hey.
Yeah.
Everybody else is like...
You wanna read them?
That's, 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 yeah, that's polished one, right, nerves.
Yeah. I did the first one, right. I did Marilyn, Pamela Scott, and these are the ones.
Okay.
So then Charlie.
Yeah, you can just fold it.
I know it's been a long night for a lot of you guys, but we're tallying up our final votes, and then we should come up with the, I guess, the verdict.
We appreciate your patience, and hang with us this evening. I'm sure some of you made some new friends while you were waiting, so that's good as well.
So you have to highlight the ones, so highlight the numbers that you wanna sort? No.
All right, so I'll read the amount of votes that each person received, all the way down, and then you guys can have a discussion, whatever. Okay. So Marilyn Abalon received five votes, Shelby Goss four votes, Charles Plummer three votes, Scott Meyer two votes, Pamela Torres one vote, Shirley Coote zero votes, and Arvin Nishel zero votes. Shelby had four votes.
So based on, based on those numbers you just said, Marilyn got the top vote, Shelby got the second top, and then Charlie Plummer got the third.
Correct. Pamela had one, to answer your question.
are the numbers.
Yeah. So I think when we spoke before council, and just so this, that the audience knows, we decided to, before we even interviewed anybody, we said, we'll take the top three, and put them in order. The first top two would get the full two-year slots.
Four years.
I mean, four-year slots, yeah, four-year slots. And the third would get the two-year slot that was vacated by Councilmember Cruz. We also said, we would give the option to the top two to take the two-year slot, if they wanted that. And so, and if I may speak on behalf of the council, just as point of order, I think you give that option from the top down.
Correct.
So Marilyn would have an option to take that two-year slot, or a four-year slot. If she doesn't take it, if she takes four, it goes to Shelby, four-year or two-year. And then Charlie, if you wanna take the two-year, it would be yours. So I think that's my understanding of what we discussed earlier. I think if the, you know, the candidates understand that, I would make, you know, I'm not gonna make a motion, but I would just like to offer that to the candidates as of right now. So unless there's further discussion from council.
No, that's exactly what we talked about. So I guess right now, I would, I would ask, Marilyn, would you want the four-year or two-year?
I'll take the four-year, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Shelby, would you like the four-year or two-year?
I'll take the four-year.
Okay, thank you. You don't get an option, Charlie. You got the two-year. You gotta get back at this another two years.
So is there a required motion now?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
I would just need a motion for who we're appointing, and to what term.
Sure, no problem. I will make, where'd my paperwork go? I will make a motion to appoint Ms. Marilyn Abalon and Ms. Shelby Goss, 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 to four-year terms to the Planning Commission. And a motion, adding to that motion, to add Mr. Charlie, Charles Plummer to the two-year term to the Planning Commission.
Well, I'll second that. All right, we have a second, can we get a...
Yes. Let me just, it was David on the mark. Okay. Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oral.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we depart, though, I know some of you did not get selected tonight, but I just wanna say that, you know, your willingness to serve our community, it's amazing. I think we have a great community. I'm thankful that we have people like you, who are interested in making a difference in our community. And I would just ask that you don't stop here, that you don't allow this to discourage you not to try to do something in the future. Because every one of you, I actually kinda know you guys, probably not so much you, Shelby, but I will be getting to know you a lot better. But I do think that, you know, the passion that each one of you have, have offered and provided in front of us, and have reached out in the past, I just wanna say thank you, and just don't be discouraged. There's other things that you could do in the city as well. So, you know, keep being a part, keep being, you know, interested in doing these type things. And we more than welcome you to, to come talk with us after tonight, if you need to get some more feedback. But again, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, you are also part of a bigger group of twenty-one candidates. So, you know, you're already much closer to the top than you might feel otherwise. So I just echo what the mayor said, and just wanted to put it in perspective. There was a lot of people that didn't even get the interview. So you guys should be proud of yourself, and come back again.
Yeah. And hopefully, some of you have put in for some of the other commissions that are gonna be coming down the pike, so thank you. So with that, are we swearing in tonight, or not swearing?
We actually, we talked about that, and we were initially gonna do it here, but we thought it might be nicer to do it at Planning Commission, when people could invite their families if they wanna come and be part of that. So Nicole is gonna do their swearing-in at Planning Commission.
Okay.
And we have orientation next week, and everybody should have gotten an email. Okay.
So the next business item is the, do we, do we need to do anything?
We do not.
Okay. But the next business item is the appointment process remaining for commission vacancies.
And before we move on, I would just like to personally, thank everyone, and also congratulate the people that were selected this evening. Congratulations.
So for the, I'm gonna hand this out really quick. I have the summaries for Planning, PCS and OSATs. So I'm just gonna hand those out really quick. Some, you'll notice some of the names have gone missing. Those are people that applied for Planning Commission, and also turned in a second application. So you're gonna see a couple people that we've interviewed for another commission opportunity. Also, just to note that with, with Charles Plummer's appointment to Planning Commission, we now have a half-term opening on PCS, Parks and Community Services. So we have five openings, two partial term, and three full term. One incumbent has applied, so we do have one incumbent that is looking for...
So the entire Parks Commission's turning over?
Yep. Yeah.
Didn't you just become the chair?
Thanks, Charles.
Or the president?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have one, like I said, one incumbent is applying, that's Gina Griggs. There are, I think you're gonna see Shirley and Scott Meyer, both have applied, and a couple more that did not interview tonight, that you'll see at PCS.
So may I just make a quick suggestion? So for the committee that, for the audience that doesn't know, Councilmember Cruz and I serve on a two-by-two interview selection committee. The process that you went through tonight, the council appointed us to figure that out. That was accepting the applications, pairing them down, we didn't pair them down, the council voted on it, but to actually getting to this process is how we got here. And so we're very familiar with that. And may I suggest to the rest of the council, that we, because there's five, and we have eight candidates, we just go ahead and interview them all. We pared it down from twenty-one to seven tonight, just 'cause we weren't gonna be here until Friday interviewing people. And we did a paper screening before. I don't think we need to do that. I think we, given the number of vacancies, we just interview all eight. And same for OSATs, there's only four there. And how many seats on OSATs is that?
Yeah, there are three, there is three openings on OSATs. We received four applications, two are incumbent, and two are new.
Yeah, so that would be the same process. There's no pairing down that's needed there. And if I remember, it's January twenty-ninth?
So, yes, we've, we've held January twenty-ninth. So one of the questions we wanted to talk about tonight was, are we going to interview everyone in, on one night? And if that's the way we're leaning, do we wanna start earlier in the evenings, so that we can get through everyone? Otherwise, we can schedule another interview session, so there would be two more, probably PCS first, and then OSATs. I do have a couple of dates that would work good for our calendar. If they work for you guys, that would be February fifth or twelfth, for a third interview panel.
Yeah, I would leave that to my colleagues to start that conversation. I guess the first option would be, do we do them all on the first night?
That's a pretty ambitious option, but if you started earlier, did the four OSATs, because you could go through that rather quickly, then we would perhaps break for dinner, because we'd be starting early, and then go through the eight candidates for PCS.
Well, tonight, we took about three hours.
Yeah.
For seven candidates. And so I'd give us at least another 90 minutes for the, for the four, with a little bit of a break.
Yeah.
So that would just be starting at five. I'd be in favor of doing it all in one night, just get our heads ready. And, you know, seats comfortable.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely double the numbers. We'll be 13 altogether. We'd knock it all out, but definitely we need a longer timeframe to not, to do this because this will be a long day for the council. But I'm in agreement to do, to knock it out all in one day.
I agree as well.
Well, I'm hearing everybody's, you know, feeling the same thing about the one day. Can I get a motion for...
So I'll, I'll make a motion to hold the next Parks and Services, Parks Commissions meeting as well as the OSATs meeting on January 29th at a time to be determined.
I'll second.
We have a second? Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes.
And then a follow-up, is the committee going to craft some questions so that they're, you know, customized for the other two commissions?
I have, similar to what we did this time, I do have the questions that we used last time for both commissions. So I'll shoot them out to you along with some sample other questions if you want to just kind of think about that. And you're free to select any questions you want or...
Yeah, just to clarify your, the question, clarify the answer to your question is, we did meet about that previously. So we were prepared for that. This was just the mechanics of that last part. So the questions were already prepared. You, you do, you will get a chance to customize it if you want to change your question.
Okay, perfect.
And then we give those questions back to you.
Back to Teresa.
Exactly. So you made an email for me about that. And then I'll also take a look at how many people we're talking about interviewing and 20 minutes apiece and like whether or not we want to start like before and eat some dinner and do it after or something. And we get some tentative times together.
Okay, perfect.
Well, there's nothing on our agenda to talk about committee reports or future items. So, I mean, am I, am I clear to go ahead and adjourn this meeting with the congratulations to those who have moved forward? So thank you. So I will adjourn this meeting for tonight and thank you. Good night, American Canyon.